Good evening. It's 5:15 and I'd like to call the October 22, 2020 meeting of the Warren County Board of Education to order. I welcome all those who are joining us in whatever social media you are utilizing, including those in the audience. May I have approval for the agenda?
Move forward, adoption of the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. The ayes have it and the approval of the agenda passes. Now we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Tommy. Would you lead us?
Yes, I would. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda passes. We don't have any student advisory to report this month. Alan Hill from Upland Design, I understand is not here. Is that correct?
He is not.
Okay, so for facilities and resources, the construction updates. Mr. Swallows will.
Okay, I'll do that. We talked to Alan. We've talked to him several times in the last couple of weeks. I apologize, he's not here. I do want to give you just an update on the West project. We are coming closer to a finish line date with them. I will tell you that, David, why don't you come on up while I'm talking about West, that we are simply, as I told you in an update, that we are waiting on materials at this point. There's lots of issues with getting glass and that's being pretty consistent with what's happening everywhere, I think. So they have really done a good job. I did update you with a flooring issue in the old cafeteria. They did have to polish that and put new flooring back down so that when we put tile down where the computer lab is going to be, it can withstand any problems there. So we do have a scheduled construction meeting with them and I believe that's going to be in two weeks to see where we are to kind of wrap up the West project. And obviously after we get through substantial completion, we will have punch list and all those different things. I know the folks at West are excited to see that wrap up and anxious to get in into their new spaces. So move on to Bobby Ray Elementary. We finalized that project. We actually went through the punch list and we have made final payment and so we have turned a corner there, I guess. And so I'll let David kind of talk about that and then David's also going to talk about the barn project as well.
Bobby Ray, like Mr. Swallows said, has been wrapped up. There is some small, minor issues that still are ongoing, but they are being taken care of. We had a door actually to mess up today, but like I say, it's being taken care of. The Bobby Ray project, of course, y'all know as well as I do, it's been a long process. But I'm glad to finally get it finished and especially for those people at Bobby Ray. I mean, they've dealt with a lot through this process and, you know, once again, I'm glad that it is finally coming to a close.
And we're very pleased with the product. I mean, there are some things that we could do better and there are some things that we still have left to do, but we're very pleased with the product and Bobby Ray's done an excellent job of communicating their needs. And I'm sure there are still more as in any school building in the county, there are always needs. But we're thrilled with the space that we have and what we've been able to provide for them.
Exactly. As far as the barn, we have walls up, we have doors up, everything is in the dry. Power, electricity is in there. We have lights on. It's coming together real good. We are finishing up some last minute items inside as far as, you know, building pens and building storage closets and first one thing and another, but we should be ready to turn it over to the agriculture department real soon. It's really coming along.
Any questions you all have? Okay, that's it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have on our agenda to do the recognition as our employee of the month.
I'll gladly do that. Our employee of the month is Melissa Marin. And Melissa has been a help to us. She was previously at the Warren Academy. When we did the transition of duties from the central office to the county with the 81 Act, like we've talked about, there were just several things that were left out, left over that we needed to do. We, I guess, went in and just grabbed Melissa and brought her over to the central office and she just came in and said, "What do you need me to do?" And she's done that. So I want to read the nomination. This was made by Mr. Pierce in Human Resources. Honorable Board of Education, after the Warren County Schools payroll department was transitioned to the county finance department, Melissa was asked to leave her TA position at Warren Academy and come to the central office to fill a temporary compliance position. She did so without hesitation. She jumped into a job with limited experience and did it to the best of her ability, not knowing how long she would be in the position. She has done an admirable job juggling requests from the county, from compliance, from HR, and the many employees of Warren County School District, and all with a smile and a can-do attitude. As of this writing, I'm not sure of her future placement, but wherever she is placed, she will be an asset for the Warren County School District. For these reasons, I recommend Melissa Marin as Classified Employee of the Month, respectfully, Roy Pierce. And I would echo what Mr. Pierce says. She's done a great job of coming in in a tough situation and we're still hanging on to her right now to figure out exactly where everything lands with all these transition of duties. And so it gives me great pleasure to name her as the employee of the month. I don't think Melissa's here, is she? I don't think she was coming, but we still wanted to recognize her and we'll give her her certificate and I will pass along your thanks to her.
Let's give Melissa a hand. Thank you, Melissa. Next on our agenda, we have the operations report also going to be given by Mr. Swallows, Director of Schools.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'm going to ask Mr. Clark if he's here to come up. And he's going to give you, all of us, a report on the Tunnel to Towers Middle Tennessee event. Appreciate him and all the time and the group that puts on this event. They've done this with our school system on our campus for a few years and I think he's come and given you an update over the last few years and we wanted him to be able to do that again. So, Mr. Clark?
Thank you. This wasn't even our second year that we had our flagship fundraising event, which is the 5K we had here this year. I'm proud to say that even with all the challenges that we faced this year, our revenue was up, our participation was up, our sponsorships were up across the board. Again, it's a year-round fundraising effort that we do. We've already passed $30,000 locally and a big chunk of it came from that event. So I want to say thank you to all of you for allowing us to have that. And our hope is that we can request your permission once again to come back next year and our proposed date is June the 5th. So that's what we would like your permission to do and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those for you.
Any questions from the group? Sir?
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Not necessarily. I think we can approve that just at the district level. Just want to make sure that we offer our thanks. This is a very noble event and the intent behind it is very well-served and I think it speaks to our community and how well our community backs the folks that need it the most. And I appreciate Mr. Clark for being here and making sure that he and I have actually never met. We've done a lot of emails, so tonight's the first chance we get to meet. So appreciate him being here and giving you all an update. I'm sure if you've got questions, you can answer it. If not, we'll work with him to make sure we can have this again in 2021.
You know, I think most people here have at least a good general idea of Tunnel to Towers. But just to make sure, since we do have WCS TV television viewers, why don't you give us maybe a 30-second overview of what Tunnels to Towers is all about?
Sure. So we're a charity that is concerned with injured veterans and the surviving family members of members of the military and first responders who are killed in the line of duty. So what we specifically do is we build smart homes for catastrophically injured veterans and we also pay off mortgages for the families of members of the military and first responders who are killed in the line of duty. So just in the last year in this area, we paid off the mortgage for Hendersonville Police Officer Spencer Bristol, who was killed in the line of duty. We also provided a home for a family in Smithville who had a husband that was killed in Afghanistan in the line of duty. We also paid for Huntsville Police Officer named Billy Clardy, who was killed in the line of duty. All of this just in the last year. So we were very fortunate. We had two of the three, two representatives of those three families locally that were actually with us at the June event. And it's really moving to hear their story and to tell you how much it affects them. So we couldn't do this without everybody's support.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. That's very helpful, just to make sure that we, you know, had that update, the latest information. And I would join Mr. Swallows and other board members in just offering you a hearty, sincere commendation for this work.
Thank you.
And it is work.
Well, I'm one of many, so there's so many more than just me, but on behalf of all of us, thank you and thank y'all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate Mr. Clark. Our next item on the operations report is the transportation report and I'm going to ask Ms. Rader if she'll come up to the microphone from Durham Transportation. As she's doing that, I just want to say before she gives us an update, as we all know, this year has been a challenge in many areas. Transportation has not been excluded from that area. Durham has been fantastic. From the time that I came in, started setting up weekly calls to help us try to navigate these waters of what are we going to do when we get back into school? Bless you. And so Tanya and I were on a weekly call and the company has even sent drivers, I believe, from other parts of the state to help cover some of our shortages. And I appreciate so much them doing that and having the foresight to do that and to help us keep our buses on the road. So I just want to say that at the beginning and then I'll let Ms. Rader give an update.
Thank you. I wanted to let you know, we have 56 routes and at this time, we are at 49 drivers. We have borrowed six drivers from the Memphis area because they're on virtual till the first of the year. We have five drivers in training at this time. Obviously, as a school bus driver, it's not a position I can just get an application and fill the spot. We do background, fingerprinting, physicals, drug screens, interviews, physical performance testing, and then it's time for a CDL permit and then 15 days of behind-the-wheel training before they can go to a third-party tester to get a license. So we are working hard to fill those spots with good, qualified, hard-working, and good with children employees. You can't just put anybody in that position. We have been very fortunate that we have only had one COVID case and one quarantine due to her child being a testing positive. All employees have been provided masks and instructed to wear during loading and unloading of children. We have also been supplied with masks for the children by the district and drivers have been handing them out as loading the bus if they did not already have one. I know this year has been very challenging, like Mr. Swallows just said, for everyone. As we have worked hard, as we have worked and walked in uncharted waters together, maybe not always making the decisions everyone liked, but doing our best to make the best ones for the children of Warren County. I would like to take a minute and thank everyone for their dedication and hard work to make this work as good as possible. I would definitely like to take this time to thank all of my employees at Durham for their hard work. They arrive early, inspect their bus for the safety of the children, and then they stay after routes to clean their buses for the safety of our children. They clean every seat, every rail, every window, wall, anything someone might have touched, and they do this after every route. They have worked with dedication and love to keep these children as safe as possible. Not just safely to school and home, but from the pandemic we're suffering right now. So thank you, drivers, aides, our mechanics, and my safety supervisor for all your hard work. It does not go unnoticed. And I'd like to thank all your board members for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. And if you have any questions for me?
Tanya, I would just like to shout out, thank you for all you do and all your support, everything during this time especially. Thank you.
I'll just say I want to echo her, thanks to our drivers. Many of them are the first people that our children see and even though they've got a mask on, it's hopefully a friendly welcome and they're an integral part of our system. And even though if they work for Durham Transportation, they're a part of our family. And so I appreciate so much all the work they're doing and it's not an easy time, especially when we were doing hybrid, when they were having to go other places and different ways and who's going to be here and who's not. And so it took a lot of coordination and Ms. Rader did a great job of that and I appreciate all that they've done. Always some bumps in the road. That's no pun intended there, but, you know, we've gotten through those as well as we could. So appreciate them.
You know, I think it's one of the advantages we have in having Durham services as our student transportation provider. You said you called in some supplemental help from Memphis.
Yes, sir.
And having a big company with the resources that Durham has and the number of employees they have, and that gives you the flexibility to call in reinforcements when you need them. So I just consider that as a great positive.
Thank you.
So that we're not left here to our own devices and struggling to fill those absences. So compliments to you all.
Thank you.
Any other questions for her?
I'm not going to ask Tanya, but when we got further down on your operations report, on the update on school operations, I suppose we're going to take some time to talk about our COVID situation. And I guess one of the issues I have, and maybe Tanya wants to kind of react to this, is parents putting visibly sick children on the buses in the morning. I don't understand it from any perspective. Children that are visibly too sick to go to school and parents put the kids on the bus. It's a Warren County School System and Durham Transportation and teachers and staff. You all take care of it from here and I'll see you this afternoon. In my perception, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is a problem. Because the last thing we need is more COVID-infected kids coming into the school system. And we're trying to create this, I guess, what you might call a safe bubble, you know, kind of like the NBA, but not, you know, not exactly for the same purposes. But when parents put those sick children on the bus or they're car riders and they drop them off to school, that's sending a bullet into our school system.
And I agree. I think we can address that and when we talk about school operations, I don't know if Tanya's seeing that as much. You know, to our credit as well, though, too, I think for the most part, we're doing really well with that. Now, at the end of the day, I think we have to be more cognizant of what's going on and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But are you seeing that a lot in transportation?
I mean, we are seeing a few and of course, you know, with everybody going, we can't social distance like we were when we were hybrid. But, you know, if a driver sees one visibly get on that looks like they could be ill, they try to seat them toward the front, next to the window and away from other children. How we're doing it is siblings sit together because they're already in the same household. And as of Monday morning, we made every driver do a seating chart so that if we do have a case, then we know exactly what child sat in front of them and behind them. And so we're trying to do as well as we can to keep distance. Of course, you know, you have an issue with some not wanting to keep their mask on. And, you know, my driver can't spend the whole time looking in the mirror to make sure everybody keeps wearing, but when they look up and see one, they do correct them and ask them to put it on. But all in all, you know, we have had some students this week actually sick on the bus. Of course, the school, we notify the school and they take the child. They don't, but they're still on the bus at the time. But, you know, it's just one of those.
Right. And even if the school nurse or the principal calls the parents, say, "Hey, come pick up your sick child", they've been on the bus, you know, for however long they're on the bus, half an hour, hour, whatever. And so sending them home, you know, when they got to school, well, that's what we should do, but then the damage is already done.
And I think that's the personal responsibility we're asking all our families to take. And at the end of the day, we're in a different time and through a pandemic and we need our families. And again, for the most part, they're doing well and I think even some of the problems we're having are honest mistakes. But if you know you're sick, keep your child at home and let's work through that together. Any other questions for Ms. Rader? Transportation? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
All right, so let's move on to ESG Support Services Agreement. So that was in your packet. It looks like this with Exhibit C. So let me just tell you, I'm not going to ask you to vote on that today. I'll tell you that I had to call Mr. Cox, Bobby, in to sit down and kind of take me through this a little bit and appreciate him doing that. He's always been willing to do that. This agreement has actually been signed by him, so there's no action that needs to be taken by you. We started to look at it and really I just misunderstood some of the figures that were on that. Basically, this agreement says that we are going to continue to partner with ESG for them to monitor our energy management program. And the big thing for us is that they guarantee we're going to save money. And if we don't save money, then they're going to financially make that up to us. And so initially, we didn't necessarily see why we needed to continue the support side of it. There's a $30,000 fee in that, but actually when Bobby sat down with me and explained it, we already had that money budgeted in the project, so really there's no need for you to do that. I do want to update you on the energy management program, just also to let you know that we did wrap that up as far as the construction phase, the construction. The construction phase ended on September the 23rd. And of course, that began in April of 2019. I think we would have wrapped that up a little quicker, but obviously, the shutdown in March, April, and May made things a little bit different. We are thrilled with our progress. We were projected to save $158,452 in that construction phase. We actually saved $343,242 in that construction phase. Now, let me qualify that statement to say, we had three months in that that we had very limited traffic in our buildings. And so that's, I believe, the real, the main reason that that number is higher than it is. And so let me just give you kind of an idea. I've been asked several times, what are we doing with that savings? And so understand that when we got into this project, there is a bond issue because we spent money, the county went with a bond issue with us in order to do these upgrades. And so basically, they're giving us a projected savings cost each year. We're moving that projected savings from the electric bills over to capital projects in order to help us with that capital project and to repay the bond and that, over that eighteen-year period. So it's not that we're flush with $343,000 that we can spend. I wish I could say that. But it's basically that we are using that money to help us pay back. And then over the course of time, we're going to see that increase for us. And so really thrilled with the way it's going. I'll tell you that we, just, other than the fact that my lights will go off in my office every once in a while because I haven't moved, I've been sitting at the computer, or some of the thermostats, we've had to make sure that we've made sure that everything's where it's supposed to be there. We've been very, very pleased with this project, and I think it will only continue to provide us a positive atmosphere and provide us with extra funds as we move through this. So I can answer any questions for you on that. I will tell you that the Exhibit C basically outlines what our reporting fee will be for those three years. We are going to use, again, the savings to help us take care of that. And then after that third year, we'll reexamine to see if we were where we needed to be. Any questions I can answer for you on energy management? Talked to Mr. Zekman, we talked about trying to show this project off, and I think there's a time for that, and maybe have a, I don't know, it'd be kind of hard to have an open house based on that, but maybe we can put together a little project or a video montage of some of the things that have been done at the different schools, and we can potentially show that off in the coming months so that you guys have an idea of what's going on. Other questions I can answer there? Okay, so let's move on to collaborative conferencing. So we have received notice from the Warren County Education Association for their request, written request from them to engage in collaborative conferencing. That's happened a couple of times over the course of the last few years. Robin has worked diligently with this since we received that request. And so really, we need to do a couple of things, actually, three things tonight as a board. We need to acknowledge receipt of this request from the WCEA. And then we're going to appoint, I'm going to ask you to appoint their, some members to the Special Question Committee, that they're going to oversee the collaborative conferencing poll. And WCEA has sent us their members. They are Carrie Stotts, Kim Woods, and Matthew Killian. And then I'm going to ask you to approve, from the central office staff, Carl Curtis, Candace Wilmore, and Vicky Dodd to serve on those, serve on that committee. And then once we do that, that committee will sit down and try to determine the process by which we carry out that special question. And then we will need to set a special-called board meeting to report on the collaborative conferencing poll results because that meeting must take place before December 1st, 2020. In our calendar, we do not have a November meeting, so we're going to have to set that special-called meeting to report on that. So with that being said, I'm not sure how we need to do it. Do we need to do that in three separate motions, or can we do it all in one motion?
Mr. Swallows, go over the names again, please.
Yes, ma'am. Carrie Stotts, Kim Woods, Matthew Killian, Carl Curtis, Candace Wilmore, and Vicky Dodd.
Why don't we do receipt and naming of the committee in one motion?
Okay.
And then set the meeting in a separate motion.
Okay, sounds good. So if you would entertain this, I would say that we would, in one motion, accept the written request for collaborative conferencing and appointing that Special Questions Committee in one motion. And if you approve that, we'll talk about calling a special board meeting after you entertain that motion.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
Do I have a motion to accept the written request, a knowledge and receipt of the WCEA for the collaborative conferencing, and to appoint members to the Special Acknowledgement Board? Carl Curtis, Candace Wilmore, Vicky Dodd to serve along with Carrie Stotts, Kim Woods, and Matthew Killian?
All move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any discussions? All those in favor, say a.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I will, just as we looked on our schedule, I believe our November-December combined meeting is on schedule for December the 3rd. You might want to consider making that that Monday, which would be November the 30th? That put us in too much of a-
The 30th will work for purposes of this specially-called meeting. And you could also, I mean, you could combine it with another meeting, that would be fine.
So then I guess the conventional wisdom would be there is that we wouldn't be calling a special meeting. We just move the November-December meeting from Thursday, December the 3rd, to Monday, November the 30th. We'll have our regularly-called meeting, and we can address that, we can address the collaborative conferencing at that time. Would you all-
I'd like to move that we accept November 30th, Monday, as our regularly scheduled November-December combined meeting.
We have a motion to accept our meeting for a regular call board meeting for November the 30th instead of December the 3rd. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any discussions? All those in favor, say a.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Five.
Okay, we will have our regular meeting November the 30th instead of December the 3rd.
We'll set that time at five, correct?
At five o'clock.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to update on school operations. So let me first say, lots of talk, obviously, lots of different things going on. I do want to give you a chance to say whatever you need to say and ask questions. I will tell you right off the bat, I'm not going to ask you to vote on the school calendar tonight. I believe we have a system currently that's working and working well. Now, with that being said, there are some concerns based on the rising numbers of cases in our community, in our region, in our state. And so I'll try to address those as best we can. I gave you a sheet of information based on the numbers of students that are in isolation and quarantine, and our staff members that are in isolation and quarantine. Let me again define that for those that are watching and listening. Isolation is any person that is tested positive. They are isolated for ten days or till their symptoms subside. And so that's what isolation is. Quarantine is defined by the CDC and the Tennessee Department of Health as any person that has been a close contact to a positive case, which means any person that's been within six feet for more than fifteen minutes throughout the day. The CDC has made that clarification as of today that says anybody that's in contact with fifteen minutes, not just at one time, but within a 24-hour period, you would be considered a close contact and need to be quarantined for fourteen days. If you are a household contact to a positive case, then you have to wait until that isolation's up. Then you start your quarantine period. So you could be in quarantine for up to twenty-four days, okay? So let me say, we came back from fall break, and we're every child in every building for four days, and then we're remote learning on Friday. It has been a challenge, okay? It has been a challenge. Now, I will also tell you that many teachers will say they're thrilled to have their students back in somewhat of a normal atmosphere. We have, as of right now, as I sit here with you, we have twenty-five students that are isolated. And that might even be different, that's on your sheet, because our nurses are updating that on a regular basis. Twenty-five positive cases, or twenty-five students that are isolated. We have three hundred and thirteen students that are quarantined. We have eleven staff members that are isolated, and we have twenty-nine staff members that are quarantined. So let me take you down a little road here. I gave you a sheet, lots of folks that are worried about the number of positive cases. Well, in August 31st, we had twenty-seven students that were isolated. So you'll see that even in August, our numbers are consistent with where we are. Even while we were on the hybrid schedule, our numbers are consistent right now with the number of isolated students. That went from twenty-seven to twenty-two, stayed at twenty-two. Now, on September the 20th, we had a drastic drop. And for a few weeks, we stayed in great shape, six, five, and six. And then after fall break, we have seen that turn back up to seventeen, and ultimately, to this week, we have twenty-five. Now, I'm going to say this, and I've talked to a few of you about it. Our school system is simply reflecting what's going on in our community.
Absolutely.
It's reflecting what's going on in our community. I'm not putting that on the community, as well as I'm not putting that on the school system. I believe we have a very effective plan in place, all right? You had the foresight to put a mask mandate in place before, a lot of folks did. We have spent hours and hours and resources over trying to keep students separated, and we've really taken a conservative approach to where we are to today. And I believe that those numbers are a reflection of that. Now, with that being said, we're making mistakes. We're doing some things that we can't let up. And that's what I said when we came back from fall break. Please don't think we've turned a corner. Please don't think we've turned a corner. We haven't turned a corner. The virus is still persistent, the virus is still around. And so we have kept all those things in place. I'll be honest with you, some people said, oh, now that we're going back full-on, let's take the masks away. And I said at the last board meeting, nothing would make me happier than to tell you that we could take those masks away. But at the end of the day, we're not in that place. We, wearing a mask is a mitigation strategy. I will also say that I've heard a lot that, well, people around us are not quarantining students. Folks, that is factually inaccurate. All the districts around us are quarantining students, with the exception of one who has simply deferred that responsibility to their Department of Health. And what I mean by that is that they're asking the Department of Health to do that, and they're not doing it as a school system. All the other school systems are doing it comparably to the way we're doing it. Now, the reason they chose to do that is basically up to them, they had to make that decision. But even in that district, if a student tests positive and a close contact is determined, then that student is being quarantined by their Department of Health. So please understand that quarantining is still taking place in those areas. That is the biggest concern for us as a school system. If you'll notice, three hundred and thirteen students being quarantined is a big number. That's bigger than we've ever had. But I will also hearken back to the fact that I told you, and you all have said, we knew, when the space being limited, we knew that quarantine number was going to go up. It's the risk that we took to get students back in school, to make sure that we're teaching them appropriately, understand that these students are not sick. These students are health, in most cases, are perfectly healthy, but they have been exposed to a close contact, which could mean that they have been exposed to the virus. The quarantine is a mitigation strategy, once again, that's being used, that's recommended by our Tennessee Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control and the CDC. So with that being said, we do have calls for alarm. We do have calls to be concerned that our community is seeing a rise. And we all have to be diligent. The thing that I continue to go back to is if you talk to these students, the thing that they're going to say to you, and again, we want to shout it from the rooftops, is we want to be in school. Parents will tell you, we want our children to be in school. Let's be thankful for that. But on top of that, in order to give them that experience, and in order to keep them in school, we all have to be diligent. Nobody likes to wear a mask. Nobody likes to keep their distance. But in order for us to be able to mitigate the spread of this virus and keep us in school, we have to do our part, all of us, not just one of us, not just a few of us, all of us. Now, so let me say this, and I'll be quiet and answer any questions. I want parents to know, I want students to know, that we are monitoring this diligently. You don't understand the level of work that our Health Services Department is doing, our school nurses, our teachers, our administrators are doing to contact trace, to make sure that we clean appropriately, to make sure that we're keeping our distance, to make sure we're keeping our masks. So we need to continue to do that. When we have pockets of positive cases, and when I mean, when I say that, we've had that over the course of the last two weeks. We had a couple of positive cases that caused us to have to quarantine a classroom, and in one case, we had to quarantine a grade level. All right, those strategies are in place. I think we did a really good job of figuring that out, identifying it, communicating to those families what was taking place, and then cleaning, making sure that we did a good job in those classrooms to make sure everything was taken care of. And then we returned, once the appropriate window was gone through, and have not had any problems since that time. So that's tribute to our system and to our employees. I want us to continue that approach. We want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to keep everybody safe. And I think as long as we keep that approach, then we'll be okay. Now, with that being said, if we have more than our fair share of positive cases, if we have multiple cases in a grade level, or a classroom, or a wing, or a school, then we'll respond appropriately, all right? On a small scale, we may have to send a classroom to remote learning. On a larger scale, we may have to send a full school to remote learning if we can't identify and contact trace. I appreciate so much the fact that Ms. Rader said they identified the seating charts, and that's big. Our teachers are doing that same thing so that we can identify those students that have been a close contact, that helps us. The thing that we've asked our employees to do is don't congregate because the more we congregate, the more likely it is that we're a close contact, and the opportunity for us to have to quarantine exists. So I will tell you, I've learned more about this in three months than I've learned, four months, than I've learned about anything else, all right? And are we perfect? We are not. But I also feel very strongly that our district is equipped to handle this. We are going to continue to monitor this. I want everyone to know, I want parents to know, that we do not want to put anybody, not one person, in harm's way. We are doing what we can to do that, and when we are doing, when we fall short of that, and you know it, then please reach out to us and let us know so that we can take care of that situation. But at the same time, I want to cheerlead, I want to applaud, I want to thank our employees for the work that they're doing, our students for what they're doing. And really, let's focus on some great things that are going on in our district. Learning is taking place, we're figuring out remote learning as we go. We're having some things that we've got to get better with that, and I think we're doing that. But I think also that I'm very proud of the work that's being done to make sure we keep everyone safe and keep them learning. So with that, I will say, I think it's wise for our district to continue in the course that we are in. We will continue to monitor that. I'm not asking you to vote to change anything. I'm not asking you to vote to change anything. I'm asking you to let us continue that way. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have or any comments.
I have a, how are we on, in reference to the teachers on the substitute list when our teachers are out for quarantine?
So we're lower than we have been. I don't know that I have an exact number. I can get that to you. I will tell you, that grade level that we end up having to go remote learning, it was because we didn't have enough at that time. As with any school year, as you get later in the week, sometimes you have harder time getting substitutes. We did have a conference call with ESS, which is our new sub vendor. They are aware of that, but I will also tell you that just as Ms. Rader said with Durham, it's just not the time, we're having a hard time getting bus drivers, we're having a hard time getting substitutes. So I will say, if you know of anybody that's looking for that opportunity, would love for them to reach out to us and let us get them taken care of. I have also said, and I appreciate that question, Mr. Bennett, some of the reasons that, I think one of the reasons that if we ever had to go remote learning, it would be that we don't have enough people to carry out the process of education.
I think that's my main concern too, is that when we get to the point that we have a large number of teachers out or no bus drivers, then I realize that we have to go to remote learning. And I know from the calls that I received and I know the rest of the board has received emails as well, most parents want their kids in school. And I do commend one thing, as you said, I do commend all of our staff, all of our teachers and all of our nurses and everyone that's working to make the schools as safe as possible.
Great, thank you.
I also want to thank the students as well as the teachers and the parents and everybody, the whole community, working together to try to make this work for our children to stay in school because I think it is really important that they stay in school and learn.
I think Mrs. Swallows was right when he said the community has got to help us. If you go out in the community, you see the people with that mask on that's asking for trouble. So we're pleading and begging the community to help us keep our kids safe. I think that's so important.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to associate myself with the comments of Mr. Bennett and yourself and Mr. Swallows and I know all of you, as board members feel like I do, just a profound sense of gratitude for the teachers, the support staff, the bus drivers, everyone who works for Warren County Schools. I've actually visited in the majority of the schools and hoped to get to the others to see how they were handling the COVID precautions. I was impressed.
Yeah.
I was impressed with the level of dedication and professionalism I saw from our employees and I was also impressed with the fact that the students, almost without exception, were following the mask mandate and were doing what they needed to do. I think the Warren County School System is managing this situation as well as it could be managed. Our problem is in the community. And if you've visited Walmart, I don't want to pick out one business in particular, but if you've visited Walmart in the last few weeks, Walmart has implemented what it calls a mask mandate. Well, it's hardly a mandate because it's not enforced. You'll find Walmart employees quite often at the door, if people come in without a mask, they will offer them a free paper disposable mask. I think that's a very good thing. But places like Walmart become the Petri dish. They become the incubator for the spread of the novel coronavirus. I just say to the parents and to the business people and to the community, if you want us to keep Warren County Schools open and provide on-campus learning for the students, the community is going to have to help. Because the children that come in from the community, they're going to bring whatever infection that they picked up in their home or in their community. I've got to say, it seems to me like sometimes there are a lot of people out there, well, I say a lot, significant number of people who either don't know or don't care or both because I see them taking no action, as simple as wearing a face mask to mitigate the spread of the coronavirus. Today, we, as of today, we had 1,387 active cases of COVID-19 in Warren County. That's according to the Tennessee Department of Health. Now, as you know, we've been watching the community positivity rate every day. The Department of Health releases new figures about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Today, we were at 8.868% positive according to the PCR test. Now, that doesn't exactly square with the positivity numbers you got from the Department of Health, they're higher. I don't know exactly what methodology they're using, but I showed them my math and they said, this is correct, this is the way to do it. So whatever discrepancy there is, I can't account for it, but 8.868 positivity is an issue. It's not only the absolute numbers, but it's the trend. And I laid on your desk this evening, the latest positivity chart and thanks to Dr. Katrina Haley, she does this Excel wizardry that'd take me, I don't know whether I could ever learn how to do it, but it takes all the data and it plots them up on this graph. Now, you see from about the end of June up to the start of September, we were in a rapid climb. We got up to about 8.5% and then it leveled out. And I was very much in hope that that plateau, that leveling out would continue and then eventually start down the other side of the mountain. That's the only time, when you start down the other side of the mountain, when that curve starts headed back to the baseline, back to zero, that's the only time you can think about, even think about relaxing masks requirements, social distancing and all these other things. Conversely, at the start of October, the graph started climbing again. Is this the second wave hitting Warren County? I tend to doubt it. I don't think we have seen just how wicked and how vicious that second wave can be. But I would like to call on everyone in our community to get with the program, do what's necessary, the simple, easy steps to slow the spread of the coronavirus. We don't have the vaccine. Some people say it'll be here soon, others maybe not so soon, I don't know. But in the meantime, it's in our hands. We can do the masks, we can do the social distancing, avoid large gatherings and that's what we can do, that's within our power. So while the Warren County School System is struggling to keep the doors open and keep the children in the classrooms, there are some elements in the community that are literally working against us. I don't know whether you agree with that or not, but when I see the number of unmasked people out in the community, that is just one more element, one more opportunity to spread the coronavirus. And that's unfortunate. I got an email, a very thoughtful and I think supremely rational email from one of our teachers and I responded to it and I think I sent you all a copy. And this teacher, you know, reviewed the situation and the hazards that we may face in continuing the on-campus model, not going to fully hybrid or fully online. And she made some very good arguments. And one of them, a question is, if you know the positivity graph is going up, why don't you just stop right now and go to 100% virtual learning? Well, that's a question. That's a question. We, I mean, the data, the science shows we're going up, so why not just be proactive and stop now? The fact is, every member of this board and Grant Swallows and his staff have a statutory and I would dare say ethical obligation to educate every child every day. The best way to do it is having an effective teacher in the classroom in front of those students and to have that interaction. That's why we're doing what we're doing. That's why we're back to 100% classroom occupancy, is to try to arrest the decline of the learning performance in our school system. And not just Warren County, but it's every school district that's been through this. But we're in a conflicted situation trying to continue education and still navigate through the storms of COVID-19. My maternal grandfather was a pretty serious independent scholar and particularly interested in Bible studies, but never one to leave well enough alone, he always wanted to offer amendments to the Beatitudes, Jesus' Sermon on the Mount. And I think one of my favorites or one I remember was something like, blessed are those who expect nothing good, for they shall not be disappointed. And another one I think is really pertinent in this situation, blessed are those who see one side of a complex issue, for they shall not be confused. So what we're trying to do is walk this tightrope, to educate every child every day to do the best we can to get those students back in the traditional teaching and learning cycle. But I just, I plead with the community, you know, don't try to knock us off the tightrope. Let us get to the other side. So, community, I'm calling on you. Help us with this. And that's, you know, that's where we are. And when you look at the positivity chart and what you see after, well, definitely the second week in October, that upward trend, that's bothersome. We'll just have to see where the community carries us because we're going to be, what we do in the Warren County Schools is going to be a reflection of what the community does.
Mr. Beal, that is, that's real good. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I appreciate all the thoughts and welcome more. I will just say, you know, I've said, we're not perfect. I don't want anybody watching tonight to say, well, my kid comes home and tells me, well, we've got some issues, we're not perfect in this. But at the end of the day, I see a lot of great things and I think we've got a system in place and we continually call on our employees and our staff and our students to follow those things. And so, again, you all know as well as I do that we're in a divisive area, era of our country, whether it's about a mask or whether it's about distancing or what it is. But again, I say that all these are mitigation strategies that have been told to us by medical professionals and I'm always going to try to err on the side of safety. And if that's what they're telling us, then I think that's what we need to do. I will say, medical professionals are telling us to get a flu shot. I went to the Health Department in Warren County two days ago and I got my flu shot. I wasn't fired up about it, I'll just be frank with you, but it was so easy, the professionals did a great job, I got my flu shot because they've asked me to do that. And so I would encourage all of you and everybody listening to do that as well because frankly, I'm ready for us to get on the other side of that mountain. And the only way we can do that is implement mitigation strategies and I hope that we'll continue to do that and do that well and help our students learn and experience what they need to in our school system. Any other questions on that?
I'd just like to say, Ms. Swallows, like I said, if my memory serves me correctly, you reminded us that we will be trading one headache for another headache whenever we move to a traditional schedule. And I think the number serves as a reflection, you know, as you've mentioned, August 31st was at 27, we're at 25 as of October 18th. That's a reflection of what the school system and administration is doing. As I've mentioned several times, we can learn from our children. Our community can learn from our children. Children will lead by example if we can follow them and they're doing their part. We, as what Mr. Zackman said, we as a community, need to do our part to keep our kids in school. And again, I would like to, in agreeance with all the rest of board members, just thank everybody for doing their part in the school system. Durham, school bus drivers, custodians, teachers assistants, everybody stepped up to do their part and I appreciate that.
I believe that wraps up the operations report.
Okay. Now, we will have curriculum and achievement reports. Mr. Zackman?
Okay, we're winding down. Madam Vice Chairperson, we've got two items on first reading and I'm going to move for adoption of both of them and waiving the requirement for second reading, that'll be part of my motion. If we can get a second, I'll ask, I'll ask Robin to kind of explain the highlights of these two policies. They are Policy DJD, Expenses and Reimbursements, and Policy DJED. These are mainly financial housekeeping issues.
I have a first, a motion for the first reading and waive the second reading of the following policies, DJD and DJED, Expenses and Reimbursements, bids and quotations. Do I have a second?
I second.
Are there any discussions?
This would probably be a good time. Robin, if you'd just like to mention, like I say, these are not things that are going to really affect the students or the community, but it's just fiscal housekeeping, I guess you might say.
Yes. These come about as a result of the county commissions meeting on Monday night where they raised the bid limit of what we have to have in order to require a bid to 25,000. It was previously 10, right? So they have done that, so that will help us in that process. And then they also made, that one is actually the second one, which is bids and quotations, DJED. So that, just the only change in that one is to raise that to 25,000. The first document is also as a result of that same change in the manual, the Warren County Finance Manual. And it just changes a few things about how expense reports are submitted and paid back. It does change the mileage and mail allowance for that. And we did not put in any numbers for that mail allowance this time because that's all reflected in the manual. And since that manual changes, that keeps us from having to come back each time and change it because, you know, that's one more step. And we do ask that it be passed on first reading just so we can go ahead and be in compliance with the Warren County Finance Manual and we can go ahead and use that in our bidding and in our travel reimbursement and expenses.
Are there any more discussions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
And that's all the business for curriculum and achievement.
Okay. Do we have other business as needed or requested? I think Mr. Swallows has something else.
I do have other business and this is, I'm excited about this business, to be frank with you. We have been able to, and just actually today, sit down and look over the numbers from the end of the year, last year, fiscally and try to identify. One of the things that we have talked about as a board is to try to recognize all the hard work that's being done by the employees of our district and try to find some way financially to give them a bonus. And I'm here tonight to ask you and gladly ask you to approve a budget amendment transfer. And let me tell you how we got there. We ended the year last year in, end of the year reserves and fund balance at $11,793,111. That was the end of the year fund balance. You need to understand that last year's expenses were lower because of the end of the year. And so I will tell you that as we shared that number with Mr. Cox, he just looked at me and said, that's great, it's higher than it's ever been. And he looked at me and said, don't screw it up. And so I completely get that. So, but one of the first things we wanted to do, once we identified that, was to try to, again, recognize our employees and try to give them a bonus. And so we have, I want to explain that it's not that we have $11 million that we can go spend. There are lots of things that come into that. First of all, we have $3,703,982 allotted from that fund balance in order to balance the budget for this coming year. So that number's already there. We have to use 3% of that number. We have to keep 3% of that number, so that takes us down to $4,912,110 that we could use. And so what we're trying to do and what I'm asking you to do is to... And so what we're trying to do and what I'm asking you to do is to approve a budget amendment. It's in front of you, from the general purpose fund, from the undesignated fund balance over to those accounts. You can see those in front of you, regular instruction bonus, regular instruction, social security, all those in order to give our classified and our certified staff a certified, or a, a bonus of 750. I'm asking you to do that tonight so that we can get that through financial management and then hopefully by the county commission at their next meeting so that we could attempt to get that and their December check right before the holidays for one, but also to help with any offset of insurance that our employees are, are taking. And so I'd like for you to consider that. I'm, I'm thrilled to be able to offer that for our employees. I wish it could be more, but I want you to understand, we're still uncertain about our budget with BEP and our numbers going down. And we're not convinced yet that they're going to have a hold harmless bill. It's been asked for, but it's not been passed. But we feel like this is an investment in our employees and they're our people and we want that to be reflected. And I, I know that you all feel the same way. So I'm asking you to take that up in new business and I'll answer any questions you have related to that.
I think it's wonderful, Mr. Swallows, that we are able to give them as much as, as this. I know it doesn't probably seem like a whole lot, but every little bit I hope will help them and show them our appreciation. So do I have a motion to approve a budget amendment from the general purpose to these accounts listed for a bonus of 750?
Is that across the board? Everybody gets the same amount?
Yes, ma'am.
That's great.
I'll make that motion to.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve a budget amendment from the general purpose accounts listed on this sheet for a bonus of 750 across the board to each.
Let me, let me clarify, I apologize. That, that total number will be 728,561. That's on your sheet, but I do want to make sure that I say that.
And we have a total of 530,000 going into the bonuses.
That, well, in line 188 will be 530,000, but you've got social security in there, you've got state retirement, you've got different line items. So the total will be 728,561.
And just for clarity, so that everybody understands, this is classified and certified?
Yes, sir.
So everybody in the Warren County School System, all employees will receive the bonus?
That's the plan, yes, sir. If you approve and the county approves.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more discussions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no? Yes, has it, the motion carries.
And that's all the business that I have.
If there's no further business, anyone? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
No.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seconded the motion to adjourn.
You did a good job, Ms. Ellen.
Who, who made the second to adjourn?